The water is figured out?
Yeah, I mean, in this case, you do have the state, you have the Division of Water Quality and the Division of Drinking Water, that they'll review all the plans, they'll be, um, they'll be doing any type of permitting necessary. And we do have with us some folks from garden engineering, uh, the engineer and also the drinking water specialist to answer, answer questions for that.
But it's approved or it's?
Well, I wouldn't say necessarily approved just yet. Um, I think there are-
Our, our suggestion is contingent on it gets approved.
That's right. Yeah. You'll notice through the conditions of approval in the staff report that there's, there's those conditions that have to be met even before they can approve the plan.
Um, Director, so what, what are we looking for public comment on these items tonight? We've kind of taken comments already earlier on. Okay. Those are my questions. So in this meeting today, they were adopted for the private streets. So that actually has, I mean, we were kind of, and that's one reason why Old Snow Basin Road is not on the agenda because, um, that item was tabled, um, the rezone. And so, but what they're going to do is they're going, on June 8th, that development, they're going to come back and look at the, the subdivision as the CBR regulations, but that's a little bit more loose. So they could still, if it gets approved as a rezone for the FB, that could still happen. But on this one, yes, the private streets. So I kind of went on, but yes, the private streets was approved.
They, they have not gotten a rezon yet. They-
Yeah. So the status on Old Snow Basin Road today, the county commission, they ended up tabling that item. And they asked the developer to have more public outreach with the community and get their take, um, on some of the issues that they had. They've already had one meeting with the public, but they've asked more public outreach to occur. And you may recall that you approved the rezone, but you limited nightly rentals not being allowed in that area. And the only way that that really can fully happen, um, is through a development agreement. And in order to enter to a development agreement, it has to be, um, two parties agreeing on both sides. And the developer didn't agree to that. And so, um, they could deny the rezone. But what would happen is if they denied it, which the developer is looking at possibly, um, looking at developing it as the CBR standards, which would actually give him more density, um, in that area and commercial. But what kind of holds everything up with that whole thing is the amount of sewer capability that he has there. So he's going to be limited to a certain extent as well. Yeah. But I probably gave you more information that you wanted to hear, but I just wanted to make sure you had all that information. Anybody else on that item?
Yeah. And so as far as the road being vacated, that doesn't even take place just yet. But as soon as they're ready to move that access gate, the private gate, then, then they'll need to do it.
Okay, anybody else on?
They would work. I mean, there would be obviously bringing that road, that private road up to a county standard. There, there is some, some improvements involved in certain circumstances, um, which I'm sure that would be taken into account. If the county saw that they needed a road or they felt like, okay, we need, we need some connection through the public right of way. They would, they would definitely take the condition of that road into, into, um, factor that in.
Correct. And so as far as the road base, the compaction and all of those requirements, they would still have to meet those requirements when they do the installation of that. And then what would happen too is there would be the ability, there would be something recorded on there that at a future date, if the county did decide to come in to look at that as a public road, um, that's something that they would have to comply with. It would, we would have to go through the eminent domain process.
And that would be to widen the right of way as well, to make it a public instead rather than-
The, the right of way should already be established.
Already established.
In through there. So whether it's 60 foot or 66 foot, that's established. So we have that. And then that way we're not have to remove homes or anything like that. And Felix, I did get a note from the host of the meeting and they're having, still having a hard time hearing you. So if we could speak a little closer to the mic.
Okay, sure.
I have that problem in county commission meeting at that mic tonight, so. Okay Felix, why don't you go ahead and give us a rundown on, uh, item number three, the Vista View subdivision?
Okay, yeah, Vista View, uh, is a, a standard type development with, with, each lot is roughly, you know, four acres plus. And each lot will have its own well. Um, it's, it's a corner lot. And, um, what the, what the owner has done is, is, um, decided to subdivide this, this large parcel into, into four lots. And there's some area that's being dedicated to, to 500 South Street and 8600 East. And there's, what was also brought up by the engineers in this circumstance was the need to, um, add a little bit more shoulder or a little bit more width to that road on 8600 East. And part of the, um, part of the conditions of approval for, for Vista View is that they give engineering cost estimate for those, for that widening of the road and that they create an escrow account. And so the cost estimate has already been approved from engineering. And so, yeah, that's why we're looking for final approval on this one.
Felix, I, I saw one thing that I don't think is correct. Irrigation water says they have 20 shares of Eden irrigation?
Okay, uh, yeah, I wasn't sure which, I know he has 20 shares, but maybe it was a, uh, one of those local companies in the area.
Emerson or, it's not Eden, I'm, I'm pretty certain of. Okay. Well, it, it would have to fly there.
Okay. We, we do have Dean Jensen here as well to, if you'd like some clarification on that right now, we could go ahead and do that.
Sure.
Yeah, this is, this is Dean Jensen. Can you hear me?
Blue water.
Hello? Can you hear me?
We can hear, certainly hear you on Zoom, but I'm not sure if that's carrying through to the commission chambers.
Okay, the, this 20 shares of irrigation water is from Huntsville Irrigation. Gotcha. Thank you.
Sorry, I'm going to try to see if I can get that. Was that coming through on your speaker, Felix?
Yeah.
Yeah, we got us-
Did the commission hear that response then?
Yeah.
Hey Felix, I recall that I was concerned when this came before, before about this deferral agreement on 500 South. So we got, I can't remember how many lots from in here, four lots or something. And the southernmost lot has 523 feet or 570 feet of frontage on 500 South on the side. Concerned that three lots aren't burdened with anything on 500 South. But this lot over there is burdened with potentially tens of thousands of dollars of improvements on basically a collector road that goes to the east that he's not using other than he's coming off his eastern access and then going down to the intersection and driving down on a steering line. So has there been any discussion on that? How to, I mean, that just seems like overreaching an onerous burden to put on one lot for 500 plus feet of curved gutter sidewalk and asphalt.
Are you talking about frontage along 8600 East or 500 South?
The 500 South.
Uh, from, to my knowledge, the engineering is not requiring any type of escrow money or any, any type, it's not included as part of the cost estimate for any improvements along 500 South. It's solely on 8600 East.
But the deferral agreement covers 500 South.
That's right.
That's, that's my concern, that that, I don't think that's equitable.
One of the things that our ordinance requires is when you're on, when you do fall in a corner lot, you're required to put in those improvements, which is kind of a difficult thing on a corner lot. And so engineering kind of a compromise, instead of saying you have to put that in right now, they're saying you can defer those costs so that it's not required right now, which our ordinance typically would require those right now. But because it's on a corner lot and they have their full access off of, well, they have two accesses, but the main one is off of 86. And so that's why they're requiring the improvements there, but the deferral on the other one to kind of offset those costs. And that probably doesn't fully satisfy your requirement, what you're thinking in through there, but it does actually satisfy our ordinance.
I'm, I'm just concerned about the distinction between onsite improvements and offsite improvements. I think that's the correct wording. You can, you can require onsite improvements. And that would be the 8600 South or, uh, East road. But offsite would be improving the road that goes, that, that main collector road, 500 South.
Is still part of that lot because they front that and it is offsite improvements, but it's still part of the right of way costs when you're doing development. You're responsible for any frontage that you have doing the improvement because the county doesn't get involved in that portion of it. You could require that right now, so the developer would be responsible for that. Or there is that option to do the deferral agreement, um, in our ordinance and that's what they've chose to do.
Does the deferral agreement obligate the lot owner to waive his rights to claim taking? Or offsite improvements?
I don't know if it would, Courtney, you may want to weigh in on that, but I don't think it, um, I'm not sure. I would have to look at the agreement itself, but it would be recorded, correct? And so it would be a matter of record for anybody who is looking into buying that lot. And they, if they do their due diligence, they should go into it knowing full well what they're getting and they can use that as a negotiation point in bargaining over the self, the sale price if they choose to. But it shouldn't be hidden. It's nothing that would be hidden from a prospective buyer.
I'm, I'm just trying to, I don't remember the name of the case, but it was a landmark case. The idea that you can, I think it was a bicycle shop in California or something.
Or Nolan, uh, or, well, there are two of them that sound the same, Nolan and Dolan, right?
That could have been it.
Right. Talking about the rough proportionality and the essential nexus.
That's right. That's, so for this lot, I mean, it seems to me that case might apply to say, you can't make him do 500 and something feet of asphalt because the county later decides they want to improve that road to benefit the people living to the east, the hundreds of lots to the east.
Well, your, your point is understood. I think, um, my advice to the planning commission and planning division would be that it's okay to go forward with this based on that analysis and also the ordinances that we have in place. Given that this is immediately adjacent to that property and looking at the overall subdivision, it is all just right there adjacent to the subdivision. So I do not see a concern in that. Yeah. If you're going offsite in through there for one lot, that would definitely, you'd have to look at that rough proportionality, um, issue. But with one lot and it's right adjacent to it, I don't, I don't see any issues that way. And we've, that's what we've always historically done because that's what our ordinance is required.
In selling these lots, in the contract, would that be that they have to put their own well in? Or there, where it's not hidden in someplace, I don't know. Where are we going to get that? Is that, would that be in the contract when you're selling the lot? Can that?
There, there is, um, a requirement that the water shares, um, are, that we record something that runs with the land, um, on that. But as far as the well goes, I'm not sure if we record anything on there.
I want to be a surprise or something, but you know, you got to put $30,000 to put a well in.
Yeah. And the typically where the wells are, we have that shown on the bar. So they're aware of that.
There is a covenant that the, that would be associated as well. It would notify any, any buyer that they, they need to drill a well. To get a building permit. So that, that's super much.
Okay.
Staff recommendation number two, developer should enter into an agreement to dedicate land for future right of way. Is that 500 South?
That one's on the north side.
The north side?
Yes, I'll, I'll bring that up on the map.
I don't know if we have time to cover Harmony Ranch with Tammy. I don't know if we can hear her on Zoom. I don't know. Tammy, if you're there, can you give us a quick rundown?
Yeah, I'm here. Can you guys hear me okay?
Sort of.
Okay. Uh, not a whole lot has changed from the preliminary approval back in February. This is a 53 acre parcel that straddles both the AV3 and the FB3 zones. The proposal is a 16 lot cluster subdivision with lot sizes ranging from 0.92 acres to just a hair under two acres. Um, there are two open space parcels proposed with this project. One of them is about a little over 14 acres that's slated to be open air, or common area rather, that would be maintained by the HOA. Uh, the other piece, which is located in the AV3 zone is almost 15 acres that they're looking to dedicate as individually owned, uh, open space. So it would be owned and maintained by the developer who would like possibly the option to put in some sort of agritourism operation in the future. And those are details we would have to certainly work out and discuss. The point, I think, of contention, or maybe not contention, but the debate in the preliminary approval was whether or not the roads in this development should be public or private. The county requested them be public because frankly, our code requires that roadways within cluster subdivisions be dedicated as public right of ways. And so this will come before you as, with that assumption that these would be public right of ways. And as far as any conditions of approval, they would be required to meet all review agency requirements, including the health departments, which, uh, they have yet to upload a review into Frontier. And they do have their own subdivision process that the applicant will need to undergo with them. I'm not sure if they've begun that process yet. And the other condition is that they, um, get final approval for their water from Nordic Mountain prior to going before the county commission for final approval. Is that, is that a detailed rundown for you guys? Do you have any questions for me?
I think that's a great start. Thank you, Tammy.
Okay, you're welcome.
Okay Felix, if it's all right with you, I'll go ahead and start the meeting official. So, uh, welcome everybody to the Ogden Valley Planning Commission, uh, May 25th, 2021. Let's go ahead and do the pledge of allegiance. Okay, thank you. Uh, commissioners with us tonight are Commissioner Howell, Commissioner Lackey, Commissioner Hoag, Commissioner Francis, myself, Commissioner Lewis, Commissioner Burton, and absent tonight is Commissioner Waldrop. We have no minutes tonight to, uh, vote in and have, uh, of the four items that we'll be discussing tonight, we are actually tabling the consideration action on the basin subdivision, located at the corner of the highway and Old Snow Basin Road. So if you're in attendance tonight for that, it's been tabled until June 8th. Usually it'd be June 1st, our first Tuesday, but Memorial Weekend or Memorial Day will preclude that. So we won't be discussing that tonight. Uh, in terms of the other three items, does anybody here have any ex parte or conflicts of interest to declare? Okay. Um, let's go on to our first me, uh, our first agenda item. UVRO 71520, consideration and action on the request for final approval of the reserve at Crimson Ridge, phases 2A, 2B, and 2C consisting of 33 lots. Felix, I believe that you're sure?
Yes, thank you, Chair. So you can see on this PowerPoint image that I've brought up, the, the vicinity aerial map showing the location of this development. This is a cluster subdivision and what they're looking for is final approval today. Some of the things that we've, we've made sure that are taken care of is, is the final subdivision plat requirement. So they do have upon the plat in that, that is, uh, just getting some final finishing touches down through the county survey review. They also have a set of engineering plans that again, I mean, just being some final finishing touches, getting ready for that as well. For all the improvements throughout all the phases, that includes that part of the new phase. Some of the things that they've included with their development plan was, um, road, showing roadway connectivity. And also showing, showing the, the geologic study and the information that, that that's helpful in designing the road and also delineating the, the little areas and, um, subdivision design. What I also have is, uh, before going to staff recommendation, what I'll probably just touch on quickly is the, um, the open space preservation plan. So the final plan, the way it sits now, it does, it does align with the open space preservation plan as well. You can see the green indicates the, uh, open space that's preserved. You can see also the, the stream corridor and the setback area that are also being preserved. Here you, uh, I'd like to also show each phase of the development. You can see they're a little bit highlighted in yellow. You have the, the watt development. And then you have the associated open space that's with each phase. So that was phase 2A. Here's 2B. You can see the lots. And then here you also have the, the open space. And this one, that drawing happens to lump them together because they're close. You have the lots and then the open space there on the, on the west side. It's staff recommendation that, uh, to approve this, um, based on the conditions stated in the staff report and the added condition to address the public comment that came in today. There was one from Miranda Mencia and one from, um, I believe is the president of the Kindview West Water System who, uh, expressed some concern over, um, just making sure that this developer is following through with the, the state requirements for a, uh, a public water system and a, um, a public, I guess, a community sewer system. So you can see that condition basically that the state engineer approved, uh, the exchange of water. The, there is an application to the state engineer right now for the approve of that exchange of water. That, that concludes my presentation. If there's any questions, uh, we do have some expert, um, engineer and also a water expert here with us today to answer questions.
Thanks Felix. We've reviewed this a few times. Anybody have any additional questions?
Maybe just one if I could, uh, on regarding the water. Would, would the water supply, the culinary and the secondary water be coming from this exchange application?
That's, yes, that's what I understand. Yep.
Okay. And not individually by lot owners. It's a community system?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion. Not all at one time.
Felix, I, I can't hear the motion because I don't have a copy of that in my back end here.
Uh, one more question, I guess. Go ahead, Steve. Steve, if you say Steve. Jeff.
Felix.
Yes.
Educate me on this number three, the Utah Division of Water Quality shall approve the septic plan. So is, is that a function of the size of the subdivision? If it's smaller, the Weber Morgan Health approves it and otherwise it goes to the state? Is that how that works?
Yes. I mean, the, the state would approve the septic plan. And you're correcting that.
And that's just because of the number of lots?
Um, I believe it's because it serves the entire, the entire development.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, the state's all over it. Okay, uh, do I hear a, okay?
I move that the, uh, approve UVRO 71520, consideration and action on a request for final approval Crimson Ridge, reserve at Crimson Ridge, phases 2A, 2B, and 2C consisting of 33 lots. Based on the findings that were set forth in the staff report, the fact that the new ordinance allowing private roads and year round subdivision has been enacted by the county commission. And subject to the staff recommendations listed in the staff report.
Okay, uh, any discussion? Actually, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Chris. All right, uh, any discussion? I think the water question is wrapped up inside of your staff recommendations. So that's covered probably. Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Thanks Felix.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, our next item is UVH 021621, consideration and action on a request of final approval, the Vista View subdivision consisting of four residential- The Vista View subdivision consisting of four residential lots. Felix, you're up again.
Yes, thank you. And just to kind of start off again, just to kind of give you a quick uh overview of the vicinity. Uh you can see Huntsville Town and this is just right to the east there. So you can see just on this area, I'd like to bring up just, just ahead of time, um the size of this block. Um and so you can see five hundred South Street and eighty-six hundred East. The portion of land that we requested for a future right-of-way is, let me bring up this one.
I'm, I'm sorry, could, could somebody close that participants box?
Thank you.
Sorry, I didn't know what you meant when you asked me, Rick. I was like, what participants? But now, now it's clear. Sorry.
So here's kind of a, a closer view of that block. Um you can see five hundred South Street there and then eighty-six hundred East. Um this, this Vista View development, um what they're proposing to do with that twenty-one acre piece is split it into four pieces. And what we, what the, what the planning division has considered through our review was the block length. And so that's why we're calling out some uh area preserved as a future right-of-way easement here on um on, you can see the, looking at the north area, you can see the the north side of this property. You can see there's a thirty-three foot future right-of-way easement there. In this drawing. So this is the AV three zoning. And we um, some of the things that, that we considered through our review were, were road dedication. And we also looked at the formation of blocks. And the uh for final approval specifically is where we looked at the cost estimate for those improvements on eighty-six hundred East. And I go to the next slide, you can see um we also look at zoning ordinance, those, those site development standards has come into play. And the uh subdivision plat review. So this being a standard subdivision, a lot less complex than you would see in a cluster or some of the PRUDs. So the, the subdivision plat review for the, the county surveyor is pretty straightforward and they're, they're wrapping up some of their final review comments uh at this time. So the staff recommends approval of this uh proposal, final approval, uh based on the commit, conditions stated in the staff report. And that concludes my presentation.
Should I ask a question? Just um, this is just for my own understanding. Uh in this case where it's a twenty-one acre parcel, now they're splitting it into four lots. There's appears to be a couple of development rights that are not being utilized, right?
That's right.
Does that mean that the, those two develop, or say, say there's two, are those development rights forever gone or are they still there if they chose to re-subdivide or something?
Yeah, as long as zoning is three acre and they have the acreage for more lots, they could definitely just come in and amend their, their plat. If they, if they choose to do so. Um there are some limitations. Once you get development, you start drilling wells and you have protection areas and septic systems and drainfields. It does complicate things, but for them to do an amendment to a four lot subdivision of this nature early on would be um definitely practical and fully.
Thank you.
They could do a detached ADU.
Excuse me?
They could do a detached ADU.
Oh, yeah. True.
So just, again, out of curiosity, if they said, we've got three development rights, that we want to sell them to somebody. Is the process in place? They could do that now?
Almost.
So yeah, with, with through the TDR program, yes, they, those development rights could maybe, maybe they have an extra development right that that could be capitalized on.
So does approval of this subdivision as requested foreclose them from doing that later on?
That's a good question.
Once we have the mechanism in place, they can transfer those if they like, or if they'd like to use this, um like I said, as an ADU. Um they could do that detached. If it's inside, they don't need them. So.
And, and Felix, remind me on the north, north end of this, there's a right-of-way for a future road, right?
It's, yeah, it would, what it's labeled, let me see if I can bring it up. I want to make sure I'm getting it right. Is that, is that legible there on that, on that image there? Uh it says right-of-way, okay, thirty-three foot future right-of-way easement.
Yeah. So, so in order for a future road to go there, the, the north side of the property line would have to also give a thirty-three foot right-of-way to make it a.
Yeah, there, there would be some, some dedication needed in order to, for that, for that right-of-way. Because at this time, what it, what the easement is doing is basically just protecting that area. Um that area is still counted toward the total overall acreage of lot four.
I think this is the one that really practically can't go, there can't be a road going to the west and there can't be one going to the east. But we're protecting in case something changes. That's why I said, right?
Yes, and it, I mean, it's hard to really foresee what exactly will happen. You never know, a developer might come in tomorrow and say, we want to do some type of huge development right here, right next to Vista View and at that point, it probably makes sense to, to do something. But until then, you, you kind of really never know. It's just just kind of anticipation maybe of, of what might happen.
Sorry, another dumb question. So if, if this property had been a little bit bigger to the north for, you know, just for talking purposes, another five hundred feet. Since this location, as I understood, was kind of chosen because it's kind of in the middle.
Yeah.
Between Fifth South and whatever, two hundred south? Or whatever it is. Anyway, the, the north, road to the north. Okay, anyway, would, would it be a requirement of the developer to dedicate or at least set aside sixty-six feet? Instead of thirty-three?
Yes, I would, I would imagine so. Uh we, we'd be looking at block lengths again. And if they had the, the area for that, we would ask for that. And that was our, my initial impression was we would ask for it for, for sixty-six and then after some discussion, we think, and back and forth, we like, no. I think thirty-three is probably this, it still accomplishes what we want. It's more equitable, especially for the, for the landowner. He was, and he, he didn't really like the idea naturally, so.
Chair Lewis, one comment on the way that is labeled, it says thirty-three foot future right-of-way easement. It would probably be better to lay, to add the word public. Thirty-three foot future public right-of-way easement to make it clear that that is free use as a public right-of-way.
Okay, so in a motion, we want to include the language of thirty-three foot public easement.
Yeah, Rick brought that up and he noticed, or he was asking about the language there and I think that's a good observation and would make things clearer. I would recommend it. Okay.
Next question, so thank you for addressing. Do we want to put on, add on eighty-six?
Add what? The?
The add, that, for the thirty foot, thirty-three, thirty-three foot public right-of-way on eighty-six hundred East.
I, I don't believe that's necessary because that would be, it's already shaded as road dedication and I think the owner's dedication language already covers that.
Would you want that to be? We have to, as it's mentioned here.
I think you just have it as future public right-of-way.
Take a note of that.
So the staff condition here is enter into an agreement to dedicate land. And you've been mentioning that'll be an easement on the plat.
That agreement would probably be separate. Uh we would probably have to draft an agreement. Because the, having the plat show, show that and maybe some, some verbiage in the dedication language, but in order for basically in order for, at the fu, at the future time when the county needs, that agreement will be in place and it would be recorded on title. So I think it'd be helpful to have an agreement that runs with the land, say that, that
Well, if it's a, if it's an easement, it certainly runs with the land.
That's true.
It's indicated on the plat.
Part of that, and I've, I've been in part of this conversation with the developer and our engineers. This is Steve Burton. Um that agreement will actually state that they will dedicate that land to the county when the county requests that. Um that's so that the county doesn't have to go through into eminent domain at a later time. Uh because at subdivision, our codes do allow us to, to look at block length and require road dedication where necessary. And so that agreement will state that the owner will dedicate that to the county at the time that the county requests it.
So Chair, that's not recorded anywhere then, other than in your, in the development agreement, or it is recorded?
So that agreement, we will have drafted and it will be recorded um with the plat, once the commission signs the plat? Yeah, that will be recorded on the title.
It's still on the first.
Okay, commissioners, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion. I move to approve petition number UV H zero two one six two one for final approval of Vista View subdivision located at four oh three South, eighty-six hundred East, East Huntsville, twenty-one point one acres, zone AV three agricultural valley. Applicant named Jensen. Uh the one note in, in the uh, the uh report, the staff report, uh in line six, in the background and summary note, a change uh to read thirty-three feet public right-of-way. This motion is subject to all conditions and recommendations listed in the staff report and to all state and county agencies' requirements. This motion is based on the findings listed in the staff report.
He did, okay. Alright, so we have a second from Commissioner Lackey. Okay, any discussion?
What was the line you referred to, John?
I didn't hear what you said.
In your motion, what line did you refer to?
I'm sorry, in your motion? Line six i- in the uh uh de- development, or yeah, development, wait a minute. In the background and summary uh section of the staff report, line six.
Can you read that line for us?
It's number two in the summary, but.
It looks like he's looking at the bottom of page one where it says, and, and tell me if I'm wrong about this, the bottom of page one, the very last paragraph, second to last line, says the dedication plat shall depict the thirty-three foot future right-of-way easement and the owner's dedication language will include verbiage preserving the easement area for the right-of-way. Now, did you say you want that to include public?
No, it's public.
Okay. Okay. All those in favor? Yeah, Commissioner Lackey. All those in favor? Any opposed? Alright, motion carries. Thank you Felix.
Thank you.
Okay, our uh last item is request for recommendation of final approval of Harmony Farms Cluster Subdivision consisting of sixteen lots, three open parcels, public streets throughout the proposed subdivision. And uh Tammy, you'll be presenting, is that right?
Sorry, yes.
There you are.
Yeah, sorry about that. Okay, commissioners. Um I'm not sure how much of this development you remember from February, but this came before you for preliminary approval. This is a parcel, as you can see, it's off of thirty-three fifty north. We've got um we've got Pioneer Bible Camp, Nordic Mountain here. Um I believe we've got another church property here. Um the applicant is proposing a sixteen uh lot cluster subdivision. Uh it's located in both the AV three and the FE three zones. And unfortunately, I cannot pull up the zone layer um on my GeoGizmo right here, but the AV three zone runs right up to about here. Um which includes all of this open space here and then all of the lots and the common area that kind of wraps around them and follows this um stream easement here. Uh that is in the FP three zone. Let me pull up the plat here. Um applicant is proposing public roads throughout this subdivision. Uh they have an agreement with the neighboring property owners to be able to widen this. I believe this will be dedicated as public right-of-way. And there's agreement with the developer to install that. Let me just scroll down here a little bit, give you, I'm going to zoom in a little bit and I'm going to reorient this if you'll bear with me. Can everyone see that plat? I'm assuming, yes, I didn't hear anyone.
Yes.
Okay, thank you Commissioner. Um see if I can orient this a little bit better. So we've got, the applicant is proposing trails through here and a lot of this was brought up in preliminary. I just wanted to kind of go over this a little bit more. Applicants proposing trails instead of sidewalks. So our cluster code requires either sidewalk on both sides of the right-of-ways throughout uh this development or a pathway on one side. And that's what the developer is proposing. So there would be pathway here from thirty-three hundred north. Um and there would be pathway that runs along one side of these in addition to some trails that would be um that, that are, that would be throughout this subdivision. Um let me pull up their open space plan just to show you here. This is the AV zone here and this is the FP zone. Um the proposal for this open space is that this would be, this area here would be common area and would be maintained by the HOA. Um this open space here adjacent to thirty-three hundred would be owned by the developer and our code does allow for that. It would be owned and maintained by the developer. Um who ma, who would like the option at some point in the future to possibly um do something along the lines of agritourism. But for the, in the meantime, I think they're looking to maintain that as agricultural area. This is the stream corridor that runs through here. And again, this would be part of the common area and I believe we've got some trails proposed along there.
Tammy, I don't see your cursor showing when you're.
Oh, I'm so sorry, hold on. Let me let's try this again here. Sorry about that. Thanks, Rick. Sorry, is that better? I think this is what I was trying to share. Can everyone's, can everyone see this open space plan here?
Yes.
Okay, sorry about that. This would be the agricultural piece here, this is the common area. This is your stream corridor here. And as you can see, 16, 16 lots, these are proposed to be public right of ways. When we went back and forth with engineering about how these roadways would lay out, um, engineering was fine not requiring this road to step all the way to the to the subdivision boundary. Uh, they were fine as long as we got this potential connection here to the east. And so it's changed a little bit in that we've got a cul-de-sac here instead of a road step to that southern boundary. Go back to the plat here. Do you have any questions for me at this time? Otherwise, I'll go over a couple of the conditions if that's all right.
Uh, Tammy, in your staff report, you indicate here, uh, the previous conditions of approval. This will be, and it's in red, this will be needed to be shown in the final plat and dedication accepted by the county commission in a public meeting for final approval. Was that done?
Yeah, uh, that will be done. And so what we did is, as Director Grover explained previously, is we tried to to clarify our staff reports to just kind of remind the commissioners what those preliminary conditions were and to let you know whether or not they have been met. Generally, the goal is that all of the preliminary conditions that were laid out are met before they come before you for a recommendation of final approval. Um, this particular application didn't have any conditions that needed to be met prior to coming before you today. They do, however, have a couple of conditions that need to be met before going before the county commission for their final approval. Does that answer your question, Commissioner?
And then the second item, it says the financial agreement for improvement will be required as outlined. And this is in red, this will be required prior to scheduling for final approval with the county commission.
Yes, that's that's correct. So generally, those improved, those financial guarantees, they have to do with installing the improvements. They are required, the developers required to either install their improvements or escrow for them or a combination of both. And we do require all of that to be taken care of before we bring them before the county commission. That's generally when that is taken care of is between the recommendation from the planning commission for final approval and the actual final approval granted from the county commission.
It says staff is recommending final approval. But what about those two items? Do we have to wait for those or do is we go forward?
Gotcha, those, um, the planning commission can recommend final approval. Staff will not move it forward to the county commission until those conditions have been met.
Tammy, um, I have a question on, in your staff recommendations on number one of the conditions. There's mentioned made final approval from culinary and if applicable, secondary water.
Right.
Suppliers, what 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 does the if appli- if applicable mean?
Well, there are, um, there are some culinary water companies who do not allow their water to be used for irrigation purposes. And and so before they will grant final approval, they often have requirements that secondary water be secured. Um, in this case, Nordic Mountain didn't make such a statement in their feasibility letter. And so we put that in there just in case, um, Nordic Mountain would require that they secure secondary shares to water their lawns or maintain that open space.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Tammy, where's the, how's the sewage going to be handled?
So these have been, these are, this, um, application has been, has received a septic feasibility letter from the health department. Uh, the health department has their own processes related to subdivisions. And I'm not sure where the applicant is in that process with them. But we would require the health department to, um, review and approve this subdivision before we would bring them before the county commission as well.
Ken, I noticed that there are lots of pits indicated on the plat. Does that tell us that the sewage will be septic on the individual lots?
Yes.
Some lots don't have pits?
So the health department oftentimes, depending on the proximity of these test pits, they may allow more than one lot to use the same soil data. And again, this, this would have to go through a, an approval process with the health department. Uh, the health department typically has at least, um, looked over the application by this point. They haven't had a chance to do that. Uh, and so I I can certainly allow the applicant, who I believe is on the phone, to address where he is in that process with the health department. But our minimum requirement from them at this stage is a septic feasibility. So they've had their perk tests done, the health department has had a chance to review those, and they have issued feasibility for septic systems on this property.
Uh, Tammy, uh, most of these items are usually already taken care of before they get here, aren't they?
Um, not necessarily, Commissioner, many of these, um, such as the open space agreement that's reported, that's done, um, when the final plat is reported. Final approval from culinary, that's another one. As far as final approval from these, uh, utility providers, those typically come before county commission.
So I don't see anything in the conditions about the health department approval of the septic or sanitary sewage disposal.
Right, that that would be covered under the recommendation for approval that is subject to all review agency requirements. However, the planning commission can certainly add that as a condition if they feel that would be more sufficient.
Yeah, typically, the health department is a reviewing agency. And so if engineering and health department or any of those reviewing agencies have comments, those have to be addressed prior to getting on the county commission agenda. But you can definitely put those in there if that gives you more comfort.
So it's it's covered in your comment here, all review agency requirements. And based on the following conditions. And this was originally proposed to be private roads, right?
Yes, it was. And so the developer, we indicated to them, they could proceed, um, with it as public and we could send it through or they could wait until the ordinance got approved. And Tammy, um, were you able to reach out to the developer to see which way they wanted to go on that?
Uh, I haven't spoken with the developer recently about it, but I did make him aware when the newer ordinance began the process of going before the county commission. Um, and the developer indicated he just wanted this application to continue moving forward. He may have some additional comments to that, um, in the meeting today, though.
Thank you.
So in a motion, we could approve this. Private roads or public roads?
Per meeting the ordinance, yes.
For meeting the ordinance, but at the, uh, option of the developer.
Correct.
Also, when it comes to private roads, um, we generally as staff within with our engineers also like to look if it makes sense to have this as a public road. I believe the conversation up to this point is yes, we would as staff and engineering like it to be public, even though there might be a potential for it to be private. So just, I I just bring that up in case the commission decides that you do want to approve it as as private roads, that the, uh, the reviewers up until this point have, uh, thought that it should be a public street.
Because of connectivity.
Right.
And what you may do is you could condition the approval based upon, um, meeting engineering department's requirements. You know, whether they're going to require it to be public or private. And in that way, if they can work things out with engineering department to meet the private standards, great. If not, then just let it's public. Them being a reviewing agency already, though. So it's already built in. All right, any other questions?
Do the previous conditions of approval just above the staff recommendations, do do those need to be mentioned in a motion?
You could, but it's not necessary because those are going to be addressed. Um, we have to address those before it can go for final to the county commission because it's a requirement.
Items we've just been talking about, they don't have, because the staff has to make.
We just wanted to give you the comfort level to let you know that they would be addressed at the county commission level, even though you're recommending final approval, there's still conditions that have to be addressed. And, you know, some of those is we don't like to have the developer put a financial guarantee in place at this time because it may be a few months, um, before they actually get to the county commission. And so to put that money up in an escrow or something like that isn't really fair to the developer because they can't even get started on it. So it's just, uh, it's, these are more, um, kind of dotting the eye and crossing the T at the county commission. Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I make a motion that we get final approval to applicant, application U V E 030217. For final approval of Harmony Farms Cluster subdivision at 3000 East, 3550 North. Sat Liberty. Based on, um, I'd make that decision based on the staff report and, uh, base it also on, staff recommendations and, uh, also that all review agency requirements are also met in addition to staff recommendations.
Okay, do I have a second? Discussion?
Wonder if it would be appropriate to put some wording in there that this would be approved by, recommended for final approval with either private or public roads has worked out between the developer and the staff and reviewing agencies. Just leave the door open.
Okay, let's go ahead and take a vote on it. Uh, if you'd rather see it rewritten a little bit than just vote it down and we can bring it back up. Okay, all those in favor of the motion as spoken?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. All right. Um, uh, again, item number five regarding basin subdivision has been tabled until the eighth. And, uh, is there anybody here or online in the public who has a comment for items not on the agenda? Yeah, I apologize, it's it's now being tabled to the eighth. Uh, but we definitely want to hear about it on the eighth. Okay, um, any remarks from planning commissioners? Okay, well, I certainly have a couple of comments. First of all, uh, on a, I don't know if it's a negative, uh, comment or not, but it's a concern that we have, uh, my understanding, a heliport that is being proposed in the valley, uh, at the intersection of Snow Basin Road and the highway. And I think that's going to bring with it a lot of consequences. And I think it's only moving from the Morgan Airport because they lost their lease or it's up and not being renewed. And boy, I'd sure hate to see it right smack dab next to Huntsville. And I know a lot of other people are concerned about it. And I would encourage everybody to look into it and, um, voice their concerns if they have any. Secondly, and much more importantly, I'd like to thank Chris Hoag, uh, who I understand is leaving us, uh, after this. And we really appreciate your service. It's, it's, uh, underappreciated, you know, and tons of work, but we really, we know how much it, you know, it means. So thank you for all you've done. Uh, also, Steve Waldrop, we're going to miss him very much as well. Thank you both for, you know, all of this volunteer work.
Thank you very much. It's been my pleasure to work with all of you.
Will be missed. Uh, okay, any, any comments from the planning director?
Um, just regarding the heliport, um, it is a federal agency that's doing it. And so they're exempt. So anything that you can relay back, um, to the them about it would be greatly appreciated. We're going to try to do some things on our end to try to see if there's some things that they can possibly do with, uh, dark sky compliance, buffering, um, noise, things like that. But, um, ours is just going to be more encouragement.
Yeah. Well, with, uh, Commissioner Gage, you know, Frower, he's, he has lots of good connections, uh, all the way up the ladder. So, uh, my faith, my full faith is in him. Get on the phone, man. Okay, thank you.
I have a question, Director, who is they?
Uh, the Forest Service.
And com- public comments are only going to be accepted through, I believe, May 29th or 30th. So if you do, and that allows you to be on public records, so down the road you can also add comments as far as that.
Okay, anything from legal?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you all for your attendance tonight. Have a great night. Dismissed.